Winning awards in several of the student competition categories, including illustration, fine art, creative writing, and student scholars. And several HFC college faculty will also be presenting at the conference. And so I'm going to turn this over to Peter Kim because he has the writing side of it.
So we are very lucky that among the creative writing categories, there's three major categories. There's fiction, let me go back here for a minute, there's fiction, poetry, and essay. And we had a winner in each of the three categories. So to suggest how talented our HFC students are. And in two of the categories, we have the top prize. So what you see up before you is the jurors' comments for our second place winner in the fiction category, Joshua Hillary. Oh, Rebecca left, but that's her brother, I believe. And you can see how wonderful the story and how enjoyable the juror found this particular story. I guess you could take a minute to take a look at it. Oops, I am not familiar with this particular machine. Here we go. And the first place for the creative essay was Bashir Pasha. She did a wonderful piece, as you can see right there. And again, you can kind of see how in-depth our students are able to convey their talents and their intellect. You can also see, and I believe you had the enjoyment of having Deborah C. Springsbette actually read this particular piece to you at a previous presentation. These Are My Hands. So not my hands, her hands. And we're really enjoyable to have her as the statewide winner as well. So she won our local contest, and that also got entered into the statewide contest. And there she took top prize. And then we also have, the conference is one of the, well, this is one of the greatest benefits, I think, in participating as a college in this particular organization. So of all the Michigan community colleges, LAND stands for Promoting the Liberal Arts, including scholarship. And as part of its conference, it's one of the few that I've attended where the students take center stage. They are given their own conference per se within the conference, where they get to present their projects and be professional presenters and hobnob and network with others from other colleges, other faculty, other administrators. And I am very happy to say that five of the eight statewide winners are from Henry Ford College.
Yay!
And so this is a competitive scholarly competition, and we have three of them here today with us. So if you want to come up, we have Wallah, and we have Nazreen, and we have Sarah. And I also wanted to introduce them because these are three of the five who will actually be accompanying Steve and myself, as well as some of the faculty, to Muskegon, Michigan. They will be presenting their projects before the conference goers. So we're talking an audience of 50, 60 people, so no pressure. And so they will be representing our college. And let me tell you, I've seen each of them present, and I have been to so many conferences, and they by far are among some of the best presenters that I have seen.
Oh, wonderful.
So I am very excited. So to get a sense of what these projects are, I do have them listed here. We have Sarah Williams, who couldn't join us today, but hers is going to be about some of the school issues within Detroit. We have Wallah. Did you want to share anything, or you just wanted me to read it for you? Okay. So I'm probably going to butcher it, but it's Bacteriophages Exposed. She worked with Dr. Stepaniac, a wonderful faculty mentor. We have Nazreen, who is going to talk about access. So I believe that was mentioned in an earlier presentation. We also have Kelly Vasu Slayman. She's going to be talking about urban farming. And then Sarah, neurocriminology? Did I say that correctly? Did you want to say anything about it?
Sure.
Okay.
Hello. So neurocriminology is actually a sub-discipline of neuroscience and criminology. It is, I'm very fascinated about, in a way, how to look at everything from a scientific perspective. So, and especially with everything that's happening in our everyday, and today, and especially with the recent unfortunate Florida shooting. I'm looking at the human brain. I'm comparing both a normal brain and a state, you know, a normal brain with a criminal's brain. And I am inspecting both the frontal lobe and the amygdala. And the frontal lobe is basically the part of the brain where it gives you, like allows a person to decide what's right from wrong. And the amygdala is the part of the brain that gives someone a remorse. And it's very fascinating. Through my program, I was able to examine both brains, and I was able to see how someone with a damaged brain, either by, you know, by birth or by life, by human experiences, by trauma or whatever, they were able to have a very low activity, there was a low activity in their brain. So that's something very interesting to me, and I'm very happy to have been in the honors program. And they were awesome, and my mentor was great, and I'm really excited to present at the LAND Conference this year. So thank you.
Thank you.
Now I'm going to turn it over to Steve. He's going to talk about the art awards.
Okay, of the seven art awards, we have five of them from Henry Ford College. We had about, I'm trying to think, last year, four, five, and again, five this year. The judge for the art awards was Ms. Grace Sarah, who is curator of the Permanent Collection at Wayne State University, as well as here at Henry Ford. She's the one who has been hanging artwork throughout our halls that has been stored in the basement of the Fine Arts Building for eons. She was given a disc with three folders labeled illustration, 2D, and 3D, two-dimensional work, three-dimensional work. Each folder contained nothing but JPGs and a number for each entry. No names of students, mentors, or schools. This was done to make sure there was no unintentional bias. And as I said, we won five of the seven awards. And so, the first award, and I'm going to get Joe up here to just introduce him. Oh, this is Gabby. Sorry. Gabrielle Sisler, and also her mentor for this is Vicky Shepherd. And the jurors, and these pieces are back here. And this piece will be on the program cover for the student section of the conference. And the jurors comment about the piece. Do you want to say anything about it?
It's a beautiful piece, yeah. What was your inspiration with this piece?
The theme was bridges. So I just, I wanted to do something with women, everything that's going on today. So I decided to do a bridge that doesn't have an ending, to leave it within, like, the person to portray the ending.
Very nice.
In the two-dimensional media, we received third place, second place, and first place. This is Laine Crimona, who was intending on being here. She had car problems, texted me about a half hour before the meeting, and said, "My car broke down. My father's coming and getting me. I won't be there." But this piece is in the back of the room. And Delaney didn't make it. She was going to try to get out of another class in order to be here. And this is second place for two-dimensional media. And first place for two-dimensional media was by Joe Barcoyak. And Joe's here. And, yeah. And his mentor is Betty Brownlee, who's one of our adjuncts in the art department. She's been here since 2010, helping out.
Wow, beautiful piece.
Yeah, you can obviously, you can obviously see that though it's untitled, it's a self-portrait of Jill.
How'd you do it?
Uh, charcoal.
Oh, nice.
That's great.
I, uh, it was for, it wasn't a final project, but it was, it was one of our last projects for the semester. And I was originally going to do a picture of my dog, and the copy didn't necessarily come out right, so I had to go back to FedEx and make a new copy of a different picture. So I just decided to use that one. And it worked out really well, so I'm really proud of it.
And we won first place for three-dimensional media. It was one of my students, Daniela Segado Madrid, who is, this piece is about herself. She's one of our Dreamer students. And it's a piece made out of clay, and it's in the back of the room. She could not be here. She works, Daniela goes to school full-time. Daniela works full-time as a janitor at one of the auto plants, and also helps with taking her younger siblings to and from school on a regular basis. And she's in a very unique situation that she was brought here, I believe, when she was four. Her stepfather is American, and through her stepfather, or through her, through her stepfather, her mother is apparently legal now. Both of her younger siblings are born here, so they are legal. She's the only one in the family that is not. And her dream is to go to Wayne State for fashion design, and I've already been trying to, I've written a letter to their art and design program, seeing if there's any way we could help her with more classes here, or they have any scholarships or anything, because as DACA student, she has to pay full tuition, whether she, yeah, which at Wayne State would be out-of-state tuition.
By the way, she's not alone in that. Almost all of the DACA applicants and DACA-eligible people, almost every single one of them has American citizen and permanent resident relatives. It's because of the punitive nature of U.S. immigration law that they cannot go out and come back in. It's not that they came here and they're freeloaded or anything.
No, I understand that totally.
I know you, and probably everybody else does.
We do here.
It just, it's like a, it's a sort of, yeah, obviously.
And also of the five, five of the 20 10-minute lightning talks, which are really quite exciting because it's a 10-minute presentation on an innovative way of teaching, or looking at curriculum or something. So these are submissions from faculty members from across the state. Five of the 20 at this year's conference are HFC faculty.
And they can talk in just 10 minutes?
Yeah, they're, they're dinged out in 10 minutes. And so here, Maggie Wukowski, on no more fill-in-the-blank meaningful writing in lower-level Spanish classes. Jerry Dublinsky on teaching creativity. Pat Landzahn on breaking the paraplegic barriers. Leah McCauskey, this is worse, what can we learn from teaching bad writing? And Kim, how's Kim's last name pronounced?
Okapinti.
Visual, yeah.
Okapinti.
Okapinti, visual rhetoric, a vehicle for connection. So Peter Kim and I, and several of our other faculty members, colleagues, and several students will be headed up to Muskegon come Wednesday.
Wonderful. Great. So I appreciate your patience through those two presentations, but did you see everything from high-end technology jobs being done at defying heights on tops of poles, to people creating their own works with their own hands? This is, this is the student body that you represent, and we cannot thank you enough for your continued and ongoing support. Next item, please. Sorry. Next item, please.
Discussion items. First one is tuition rates for 2018, 2019, effective fall 2018. Board report 4418. Mr. Kevin Koller.
Well, I have to say, following three very inspirational presentations, I'm going to come across as the bad guy here, probably, but Dr. Mead and President Siedkowski and board members, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight on a subject that tuition, tuition increase, which is never a pleasant subject, it's not an easy subject, and it's definitely something that none of us want to take, want to take lightly. Unfortunately, the reality is, as expenses continue to creep up, and primary revenue sources either remain flat or decrease, it's an unfortunate necessity. As has been discussed previously, Henry Ford College is more dependent on tuition revenue than most of the other community colleges, primarily due to the size of our tax district, tax-based district. Property tax revenue, as Mr. Siedkowski mentioned earlier, is, revenue is expected to be relatively flat in 2018, 2019. The state appropriations are expected to be flat. And enrollment has decreased slightly, and the college's enrollment makeup has also shifted a little bit, as we've talked in the last year, from more out-of-district to more in-district, which means less tuition revenue as well, based on in-district rate. Despite these challenges, HFC's tuition rates remain lower than the majority of the Michigan community colleges. Our in-district rate is third, our out-of-district rate is ninth, and our out-of-state rate is 13th. And I think hopefully all of you have, there was a chart that was supposed to be included that shows what the rates are at the other schools and where our rankings are in those areas. Even with the proposed increases, HFC's tuition rates would still remain lower than the majority of Michigan community colleges. It's still third for in-district, ninth out-of-district, and 17th at least for the out-of-state, out-of-state rates. Most other Michigan community colleges are also expected to raise tuition in 1819. Twenty-five of the 28 Michigan community colleges did raise tuition in 2017, 2018. So if they raise again this year, we could actually, our, not that it's ever good to raise, our comparative, our comparative point with the other colleges should stay the same or improve. HFC is also one of only nine Michigan community colleges that charges tuition based on contact hours, or I'm sorry, on credit hours as opposed to contact hours. And the fact that we do that oftentimes makes it less expensive for students because our actual, the contact hours, the students will automatically charge those additional contact hours at the regular tuition rate, so that adds up to a higher rate. With that said, the recommendation is to raise the in-district rate 3.1% from $96 to $99. The out-of-district rate, 3.6% from $166 to $172. And to raise the out-of-state rate, 4.2% for $240 to $250. And I'd certainly be happy to try to answer any questions that anybody has on this difficult subject.
Trustee Barry.
The increase in tuition for in-district?
Yes.
How much additional revenues will that bring in annually?
If I remember correctly, $1 is equivalent to about $127,000, so about $400,000 for the $3.
I have a couple other questions. If we add in the fees, where does that put us compared to Monroe and Wayne? Do we drop in the list? Do we stay where we're at?
I will tell you in just a moment. We drop a little bit on the list. We're still definitely in the lower, the lower tier, but when you add in fees, I'll be able to tell you in just a minute here. Adding tuition and fees, and looking at a full-time student, 15 hours for fall and 15 hours for winter, and most of our students will only take 12, but based on the 15 hours, we would rank ninth in the state in terms of our tuition and fee rate. We would be, we would be less expensive than both Monroe and Schoolcraft.
But not much. If we're ninth, we're only a few spots away.
Pardon?
I said, but we'll be closer to them. I mean, we'll be ninth, they'll be...
We're ninth right now, Monroe's...
I would have liked to see a report with, with those numbers added in there, to be honest with you. I still would like to see that report. But this is my dilemma here. We were just earlier talking about how we were blessed that we didn't lose, you know, we didn't, we didn't, Monroe dropped in, wasn't what was planned for. With 3%, it was only 0.7. So $400,000, I mean, you're a numbers guy, you know that's going to discourage some students. How many students do you, I mean, how do we figure that out in order to bring it forward? $400,000 additionally, how many students are going, are you going to lose? Are we, is it going to work out for us?
From the standpoint of in-district, I don't think it'll have any type of impact on losing students going somewhere else, because our in-district rates are as low as they are. They're lower than Schoolcraft's. And when, Kevin, we looked at that chart today, where when we include everything to being ninth, we know that Schoolcraft is more, charges more, and so does Monroe when it comes to that. We can't touch Oakland. I mean, Oakland is just too, how should I say it, too big, too property-rich, too many alternate sources of revenue from them. But when it comes to the like-size groups of, like Schoolcraft, we're still, on average, if I recall the number, about $200 to $300 a year less than what they are, Kevin?
From Monroe and Schoolcraft? Annually, we're about $170 less than Monroe, and 200, about, almost $300 less than Schoolcraft.
Right. And we can provide that report to you. And in comparison, I was totally shocked when I looked at that, then when you look at, at Jackson Community College, our difference between them is $2,000 a year.
We are 19, yeah, $1,900 less expensive than Jackson.
I have a quick question. So it, so all of the fees stay the same?
The fees, the fees, we haven't determined the fees yet. That'll come about as part of the budget. In, in all likelihood, we have, we have our, we're not looking at any increase into our service fee, our technology fee, our student activities fee. We may be looking at a very slight increase in the registration fee, and a little bit larger increase in the infrastructure fee, and that's going to, and this is, this is still a couple months early down the line, but as you may know, we've been leasing the SME building to, to SME, two of the buildings over there for the last, for the last eight years. And their lease runs out at the end of July, and they'll be moving in August. And we have an $800,000 bond payment on that, which we've been generating about $675,000 in rent income. So we're looking at options about how we may be able to use that facility in another way, but with the loss of the revenue there, the infrastructure fee would be looked at probably to increase to cover that. The fees are, the infrastructure fee is, is just a flat rate for a semester. It's not per credit hour, like a lot of the other fees are.
Okay, so basically, if I'm only paying $3 more credit hour, and I'm a full-time student, that's $36 more?
Correct. For semester, right.
For the semester, and then a little bit more for the fees. I'm probably looking at $50 more a semester.
Right. Yes, that's about, if, that's, that's a good, that's a good number to look at. And then again, that's before anybody else within the state has taken a look at their tuition and fees at this point. We're trying to compare ourselves to the last year rates. We think we're positioning ourselves appropriately with that. And quite frankly, as I mentioned to you earlier, this personal property tax reimbursement scares the heck out of us with regards to whether it's guaranteed or not guaranteed, and it's strictly not guaranteed. So this is not, how should I say it? This is, this is as small an amount as we can, as, as we've looked at in a number of years. We're still trying to maintain the in-district rate under the $100, and the out-of-district rate is still competitive, especially when you look at, at some of our neighbors like Schoolcraft, that, that we're right, right there with them.
Trustee Laine.
Before we get too carried away with congratulating ourselves over what a great job we're doing keeping tuition low, I'd like to point out that Badenoch, Gojibic, Southwestern, those guys don't have any competition. They basically are monopolizing their area. We're not doing that great of a job. The reality is that health care and higher education are killing middle America, what's left of middle America, because over the last 30, 40 years, it's been 400% increase in tuition. So that student, it's all been shifted onto young people. I can always find some reasons to tell you why I need more money, you know, and how I deserve more money. But that's got to come from someone, and it's coming from young people who have the least money in our country. I find that really discouraging. The other thing, in addition, on the report that I'm not told, and I'm never told, is what are we doing to keep tuition rates down? I mean, besides thinking about it, do we do anything? We never are told that. And I mean that not only as a college, because obviously we're at the whim of larger forces in our society, but what are we as a society doing to keep these reasonable for families?
What I can provide you with is the ACS report that compares us with every other community college within the state of Michigan. This institution has the second lowest cost of any of the community colleges per student based on data from the state of Michigan for the last 10 years. Our revenue is the second lowest amount per student, per, per full-time equivalent. This college, in the years even before I got here, even since I've been here, has always made the effect and taken the action to minimize cost as much as, as we can. Even with our limited property tax base, even with the way the state is not maintaining its state appropriations, and even the fact that we are trying very, very hard for our in-district students to pay the least amount that they possibly can. When we talk about out-of-control tuition, we're doing a broad-brush comparison nationwide. And this institution has done a tremendous job of keeping costs down in this ever-competitive environment. The issue also is that not only are we dealing with national issues, our Pell Grants, our students get 71% of their funding from Pell Grants, and they, a majority, and I can't figure the number off the top of my head, Kevin, our students graduate, leave college with very little debt.
Trustee Petlicoff.
Well, and I guess when, you know, when we look at in-district versus the out-of-district, our in-district students, if they went anywhere else, would be paying the out-of-district rate.
Yes.
So quite frankly, I don't think we're going to lose our in-district students to go to Wayne, even Wayne County Community College, which is, they're going to be paying more, or any of, or Schoolcraft College, which they'll be paying significantly more. So the in-district versus, you know, what other in-district rates are, doesn't really, because our in-district students, no matter what, would be out-of-district wherever they went.
The least expectation, the least expensive option for them would be at least $20 a credit hour.
Now, though, when you look at the out-of-district rates, if we're going to try to increase our enrollments outside of, of our in-district students, that, that's what I, you have, my, my thinking is, is you have to watch.
Yes.
Because if, if we are not competitive with the, with Wayne County and Schoolcraft and Washington, those other, those other colleges, that's where we'll start seeing issues in the end. You know, I, nobody likes to raise the rates in any fashion. I used to hate it when I had kids here, and I'd sit here and have to, I knew I was doing myself in, every time I had to vote on a tuition rate. But it's, it's an unpleasant reality of the times. The unfortunate thing is, I don't think, is the state not even giving us our cost of living?
Zero.
Nothing. I mean, you know, this is kind of like a reflection of cost of living, basically, with the tuition increase without the state contributing.
And the economy is supposed to be well, well-improved, but the recommendation is 0% for community colleges.
Trustee Hamud.
I also agree with Trustee Petlicoff specifically about the effect on in-district, how that might not really have an effect on in-district, considering also the Pell Grants and so on. And even with that, okay, while we stay below the state average, same thing with, with the out-of-district, but what really gets to me is, if we're trying to promote those students, we talked about the, who is considered out-of-state? You're talking about the DACA students, or students that we want to consider our college from out-of-state, this is when you go above state average, only for that group. And that, to me, is concerning, and I think that in order, one, to attract those students, and two, think about who those students are. We know some of them was, one of which received an award for her artwork, and those are, those are the rates that we are, we're expecting those students to pay. That's not going to make us competitive, and only that category as to the out-of-state. The recommendation is to put us above the state average. Why?
We're just under the state average by $6.
Right now, but not with the...
I'm talking about the recommendation.
We also don't know, again, what the other columns are going to do.
Yeah, so we don't know that we will still not be...
Well, I'm saying, as projected now, for both columns, we stay below, but for that, we're...
Well, when you look at the residency for the student profile from last fall, we have 2% of our students are coming...
2% of our students are coming from the out-of-state.
Right.
And we've got 61% coming from out-of-district, and 30, 38% in district. So, even if we go above the state average, we only have 2% of our student population is out-of-state or international. So, that's, that's a very small...
But what I still like to be competitive, I mean, for being competitive in other areas, and, and who those students are.
Trustee Thart.
While we're talking about the tuition rate, I can't help but think of our foundation. I would assume our foundation is doing well, and would be able to continue offering support.
With scholarships, you mean?
Scholarships, yeah.
Absolutely. That's a major focus of what we're committed to do, what we're doing, and the board is committed to doing that as well, so absolutely.
When, yeah, trustee Barry.
Just want to make a quick comment. This has got to be a PR nightmare. Here we are, we're spending a million dollars trying to market Henry Ford College. We're trying to figure out how to raise enrollment, then the headlines are going to read, "Henry Ford College Raises Tuition." Just making a comment here. I'm having a problem with this, I guess.
When, when would the board vote on? Next month. Next month. Next March. Okay. Any other discussion? And in the meantime, if you need further information, like I mentioned earlier, we can certainly do that. Any other discussion? Okay, next item, please.
Action items.
Now, you've got board of trustees' policies.
Board of trustees' policy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries. And for, for this policy, uh, report, I would refer to trustee Nasser. Just an update as to the meeting today.
Well, I wanted to refer back to last, we are voting on, if you look at number 12, we changed the residency and the tuition fees and refunds. We previously approved the tuition fees and refunds. We had to change the residency because it was approved that we could change the time of living in district for you to qualify for in-district, from six months down to three months. And so, by doing that, we were able to, we had to change both, so we're, we'll be voting on that tonight to change it from, that was the only change, six months to three months. And today, we went over, let me see here, uh, the budget management, which we just had a couple of changes. We wanted to make sure that in, in here, we had, that we had bi-annual budget meetings, so we have one annual budget hearing that goes over the projected budget for the entire year, and then six months later, we have kind of a follow-up to make sure we're still in line, if we have to make any adjustments if necessary. We went over...
That was something that we, we added that wasn't in there, and we wanted to make sure, because we've already been receiving that.
We have been receiving that, it just needed to reflect...